Follow meeting to order at seven o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united on and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no gender adjustments tonight. We will be going into an executive session to discuss deployment of security personnel devices and strategy, and there will be no votes taken in executive session. No new vote taken will be adjourned. We have a public hearing at seven o'clock. It's think Mr. Who's waving the reading? You?
No, I'm just making a motion to open the floor.
Oh, okay. Rockland opened the public hearing. All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay. I move that South Shore Regional School District not participate in the school choice program for the school year 2018 and 2019 because the school district has an established process for admitting students who reside outside the school district.
Second.
Second by Situate. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if there's any public discussion.
Anybody out there? No?
Okay, sorry.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Second by Situate. All in favor? Unanimous. We're back in open session again.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience would like to have a public comment? Seeing none, we'll continue. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2018, school committee.
So moved. Second.
Second. First by Situate, second by Whitman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Student of the month.
(inaudible) (inaudible) We need to be near the mic as well. So, good evening. Good evening, babe. We are here today to celebrate Evan Dogo from Rockland. He is a senior enrolled in the Computer Information Technology Program and is currently employed at Congruity, a data storage company in Pembroke. He is a valued employee there. Additionally, he's an honor student, and his teachers speak of him with high regard. A recurring theme is that he is respectful, mature, and confident, and he's a natural writer and a strong critical thinker. Mrs. Borja and Mr. Shaw commented on his ability to socialize well with his peers and his teachers, and Mr. Shaw particularly noted his knack for a killer joke. He's a quiet leader. Even in the present, Evan, a quiet leader, he's also the president of our local chapter of Business Professionals of America. Additionally, he represents our state as a BPA historian, and most notable, he scored the highest in our state on the BPA exam for computer technology and computer theory. He'll be going to the Nationals for our BPA in Texas later this year. He also scored the highest on the ASVAP test and participated in the Skills USA Regional Competition in March. Not only is he skilled in academics, he is, and his trade, he's also a two-season varsity athlete, playing center linebacker. He was captain of the varsity football team, and he will play lacrosse this spring. His football coach and shop instructor, Mr. Scott, states that he is a pleasure to teach and to coach. He's an exemplary student, teammate, and classmate. Evan has a bright future indeed. I had the luxury personally of having Evan in my ninth grade English class, and I remember exactly as his teachers remember him, recite of him, and he is a mature, kind, thoughtful, great critical thinker, and has already enrolled in the military, and he'll be serving with the Air Force upon graduation. So he is a very bright piece of hair. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck on Nationals.
Treasuries report. Mr. Coughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moller. Okay, we have, since we didn't have a meeting last week, last month, we have two treasures reports if we want to take a look at it. We can take a look at just the most current one. Overall, the finances are good. The March 31st report pretty much has our year-to-date figures on it. Page one, of course, has all our cash balances, which, again, it's a good month. As of right now, all of our operating accounts have about a balance of $4.6 million. OPEB reserve account has $619,000. Again, down below, we have a little summary of where our cash is located. Most, again, most of our funds are located at Rockland Trust, a local bank. We also have savings accounts at local banks, too. We do subscribe to Abington Bank, Pilgrim Bank, and Mutual Bank that cover our member towns. So, overall, cash is strong at this point. Page two is our revenue for the past month in March. As you know, the, we do do our billing to our member towns on a quarterly basis. That was done, and they would do on March 1st, and therefore during the month of March, actually, they do April 1st. So, everybody paid in advance. The revenue from our member towns for March is $1.7 million. There was one town that hadn't paid, but that money did come in shortly after the April 1st deadline. So, we're good. Everybody's paid up. We still keep getting our monthly checks from the Commonwealth, Chapter 70, $359,000 per month. So, overall, our revenue for the month is $2.1 million, which, again, on a quarterly basis, that is on target for where our budget numbers are, so there are no surprises there. And the final page is the expenditures. March was a three payroll month. We get two of those every year. So, the payroll numbers, $934,000, are higher than normal, I mean, the normal month, but again, we did three payrolls. Overall, our expenditures are $1.1 million for the month. Spending is consistent. Sylvia and Pat do a great job in the office, and we'll be able to, you know, continue as we get into the final stretch of the fiscal year. Tom and I have spoken about what our, what our expected expenditures are over the next three months, to make sure that everything falls within the budget. We have identified a couple lines where we might have some budget-heavy savings that Tom will work on, you know, looking at major items, especially with the facility plan that was done, and to see if there's any opportunities to use some of the funds to secure some of those recommendations from the engineers. So, overall, finances are in a great shape, and we just continue to move on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. May I have a motion handover? Second by Rockland. Any discussions?
Jim, on the assessments and stuff that they do quarterly, do the non-tuition towns do the same thing as the normal towns do?
We pay them, we bill them twice a year.
Twice a year?
Yeah, so we bill them, because we don't, we can't bill them until after all the October numbers are solidified, so I believe we bill them November.
So, there's twice instead of the other seventy towns?
Yeah, we bill them twice, so.
First one is November.
First one's November, and then we do it. We send the bills, they're usually April 1st, so the second round of billings have, occasionally there's, there's adjustments to what we, what rejected numbers are with some students dropping out and so forth. So, we have lost one or two out-of-district students. So, at that point, we sometimes will adjust the tuition rates that we charge them, but again, it's, that's usually on a case-by-case basis, so.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Do we have a couple of budget transfers?
We do.
No others? All in favor? I mean, make a motion. That was Hanover and Rockland. All in favor? Unanimous. Budget transfers, Jim?
Yeah, we have some budget transfers going back to February. Again, just some minor housekeeping things. We were adding $7,000 into the software and license renewal account, and we're taking that out of our electricity account. And we're also adding $5,000 into our telephone account, and we're, again, also taking that out of our electricity account. So, things are going well. And just, again, every once in a while, the budget, as you all know, is done in January, December, January, the previous year, so it's tough to actually project on target everything, but, so we do have occasional transfers to, to clean up our budget numbers so far. We're looking at $7,000 for our software license account and $5,000 for our telephone accounts.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Situate?
I'll second.
Second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Do you have anything else, Jim?
Just one thing. I'm expecting to have Bruce Norling at our May meeting for the presentation of the annual audit. The audit's delayed because of all the new pension rules that come into play with the government regulations regarding what the disclosures are, so we have to wait for the Plymouth County numbers to be audited and finalized before they, Bruce can then incorporate that into our, our numbers. So, the expectation that Bruce will be giving a presentation in May.
Well, question, will we be meeting prior to that maybe?
Yes, we'll probably, yes, we'll do a meeting beforehand, yeah, so, of the committee. And the only other thing is that the, it looks as though the Ways and Means Committee, the state budget, is favorable on Chapter 70 and regional transportation numbers. I haven't been able to find a detail on it, but I know that, I think the House budget, the House, the House Ways and Means has added a couple million to regional transportation and a few million to the Chapter 70, you know, pots, so we may see a little bit of an increase as it triples down to regional schools and so forth, so that's, that's good news as opposed to any other reductions they might be looking at. So, both, both the Chapter 70 and the regional transportation have higher numbers on the Ways and Means Committee budget, so. We'd like to know if anything that goes on with that.
Chairman has nothing. He's going to divert to Superintendent Director. Subcommittee's, we don't have any of those this time either.
No.
No. Superintendent?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some prepared report comments, but I'd like to defer those to recognize in the audience. Matt Filano, our Science Department head, John Scott Bledy, our English Department head, have just, just returned from the New Jersey service trip, and when I mean just, I mean they woke up this morning in New Jersey. And they are, they're here tonight as regular attendees of our meetings, but I want to, I want to thank them personally for joining two other staff members in leading a group of students in what was our inaugural service learning trip, which I'm sure there'll be many more to come. They were great in keeping us informed with some pictures of what has been done, and I'd, I'd welcome if either of them would like to just comment extemporaneously on, what was the best fast food joint they went to, and how good were the neighbors' cookies that they brought, and all the other good stuff.
Don't fight over, gentlemen.
Matt, did you have, did you have a PowerPoint, just in case I asked, or did?
Would you miss that?
No.
Briefly, it was worth all the time and effort put into it. All the students, it was extremely rewarding for them. It was extremely rewarding for us. When we had gone down there, there was not one person that was not complimentary of our students for their professionalism. We were, we happened to be at a place where we stayed. There was also another vocational administrator, and he was very surprised at how excellent our kids were. I can tell you that on the sites that we were working at, the site leaders learned from our students. There were electrical issues that our kids problem-solved and fixed it. They were going through the safety briefing, and all our kids that were construction certified, they said we're all OSHA construction certified, and they were able to help out. It was just, it was a wonderful experience for them. They got to see the positivity of other actions. We had the homeowners come out, and the kids got to really appreciate what it's like to not be in your house for five years. And the appreciation made it worthwhile for the students. So, it was just positive on every, every level, and, like I said, all the work that went into it was well worth it. So, thank you for, again, to the union who donated, to the parents, to the members of the community that participated in meat raffles. We had parents making enough food to choke everyone. It was just an excellent community-building event, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to reckon, you just tell the crowd, like, we're, we're about you guys, why?
We were staying at Camp Evans, which is a military base that has since been decommissioned, and we were basically along the coast of New Jersey, so there were a couple places in Forkett River and also a place in Highland River, and literally, you turned one corner and you see the ocean. So, basically, the kids were participating and doing some of the final touches on some houses, so people had come in previously, and it was just kind of a marathon of building of what, what other groups had done. And like I said, our kids, you know, even the non-construction kids, they have built into their curriculum the ability to problem-solve, the ability to adjust. So, I mean, we had Allied Health girls that were just the greatest spacklers on the planet. I mean, it was just a wonderful time for them, and of course, in the evenings, we got back together through the amazing powers of Mr. Scott Bledy, there was opportunities for social, emotional learning. It was, it was just, it was just in every way, shape, or form, everything. It was, it was a good, well-rewarding trip, and my only regret is that we couldn't bring down another 50 kids. Maybe next year.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you both.
Thank you.
John, did you, were you playing a game? Were you, like, refereeing a contest? I saw some pictures where you were standing, there were two kids facing each other. There may have been snacks involved, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, what we did is, we did Family Feud-style games. And that ranged everything from nicknames that the kids gave themselves to superlatives that the chaperones gave to the kids. So, here's the, here's the superlative, the most likely to be covered in spackle. And then they would just have to choose.
Yeah, I saw that picture.
It was good. It was a great sentence.
Awesome. Thank you both. Mr. Chairman, I'll just continue with some more boring topics. I, I want to thank all the members of the committee for all of the time that you have put in to, to assist me as we have made our rounds through all of our communities talking about the regional agreement and the budget. The last stop on the world tour, Tom and I will be in Abington on Monday night and to speak to their board of selectmen about the regional agreement, and we will, George and I will be at Cohasset's town meeting one week from Monday on, on April 30th or 29th, 30th. And, and then we'll go into the other, the other town meetings as we, as we all know. But it's been great to have the outreach to one or more boards within your communities and staying in touch with them and building relationships with them is absolutely essential. So, thank you very much for all the time that you've all put in to help. I appreciate it. Tonight, you voted the minutes from our February meeting, and the reason I have MSBA on there is that we have submitted all our documentation, and now the, MSBA requires that we submit approved minutes from the meeting where we read that marathon motion. And so, that will be sent in, and that will pretty much put a bow on the application, and, and that will go through the review process. The principal search process, we, as you know, we had a, an interview. Mr. Aubrey was interviewed by our interview committee and myself. The week, a week later, on April 10th, we had a public forum. It was, there was a lot, there were a lot of great questions. I appreciate staff members, Bob Mahoney, who attended. We had several parents. Mr. Aubrey fielded questions for the better part of an hour and a half on topics that were important to the members of the audience, and the kids that were there, the students that were there, asked great questions as well. The process from here will essentially take, the next step in the process will be, I'll schedule an interview with Mr. Aubrey myself, and I'll have updates to report to you probably prior to the, our May school committee meeting. So, that's item three. Item four, just to bring to your attention, that we're, we're scheduling a legislative breakfast for Friday morning, April, excuse me, May 11th, if you're, if you're available. We'll do reminder calls on that. We're looking to have every member of our legislative delegation, whether it's the elected official or a member of their staff, attend. I would expect to use the majority of the time to talk about our master facilities audit, remind them of our MSBA submission, and talk about some of the legislative items that are important to vocational schools. And as Jim said earlier, regional transportation is certainly always in the upper tier of, of legislative priorities.
What time is that?
We're planning that, Dan, for, it's, I think it's, we're planning it for eight o'clock, and we'll probably start remarks around 8:30, but we'll do, certainly do reminder on that as well.
One of our, other schools just had one, what, this week or a couple days ago?
Oh, did they?
Yeah, I got the email on it today. I can't remember the school, but.
It's that time of year.
They had their legislative breakfast.
Yeah. So, that's, that's coming up. I also want to bring to your attention, as I communicated to you previously, we're going to have, we're going to have Carpentry do some work on building a ramp at a Girl Scout house in Hingham. I bring it to your attention, obviously, Hingham is not in the district, but everyone is on the same page, and this would be an excellent project, and it turns out that there are many Girl Scouts from our member towns that avail, that go to that, go to that structure. So, that is something that will be, the timeline is, is pretty favorable. It's not an in-depth project and can be started and completed before the end of the school year. Item six, textbook adoptions, I want to bring to your attention that we have a science, a marine science text and also a culinary arts text for the first time, and I'll have the culinary text back to you for the May meeting as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, this is the one I just happened to mention.
Oh, the Mass Association of Regional Schools?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a legislative breakfast earlier this month.
Yeah, April 6th.
I'm sorry, Bob, did you have a?
Does that, textbook, do you have a vote? Does that need a vote?
We do not need a vote on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the extent of my report. I can continue when you get to new business.
Go ahead, I'm ready.
Okay, so no, no unfinished business. Members of the committee, in your packet, there is a, a draft calendar for 2018, 2019, and I would ask for a vote to approve that, please.
So moved.
Rockland?
Second.
Situate? Anonymity. Rockland, second. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Planning for no snow. Item 9B, school mission statement. If I could, if you had the chance to look at it to direct your attention, document number 10, it's the, what would you say, salmon-colored piece of paper? At least, that's what I have. That might help it stand out. The school council spent a considerable amount of time looking at revising our school mission statement. The accrediting agency for our school and all public schools, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, came to us for a decennial visit, the full physical they give every school every 10 years, and one of their, one of their recommendations was that we take a, a look at the, the mission statement. And it was not because there were any major flaws, it's because that's just part of a continuous improvement process. We're going to have our friends from NEAS visiting for a five-year check-in, so the timing of the council's work is, is, is spot-on. So, the proposal here that I would ask, I would ask for your approval on is that the mission statement that we would be publishing around the school, that we would publish on our website, would be, would be revised so that it would read, "Through rigorous and relevant hands-on instructional experiences, South Shore will develop confident, civic-minded students who achieve ambitious career goals, leading to their personal fulfillment, economic independence, and positive impact on the community." The faculty took this matter up at a faculty meeting in March, and they, they voted in their approval of this as well.
Hanover made the motion.
I'll second.
Hanson seconded. Any discussion on it? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. And we'll start to make those changes, as I said, for going into, what we can change quickly, we'll do, and then we'll transition other documents over for next year. Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, the next item under new business is a collision repair technology closure restructuring plan. This is a topic that I, I want to bring to your attention tonight. We can take a vote on it, we don't have to. It's my recommendation that we need to look differently at our collision repair technology program, and given the fact that we've had some low enrollment, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a, a different direction that would allow us to preserve some collision repair instruction as part of our automotive program, while at the same time preserving the footprint of collision repair, because I do believe that there is something for, there is, there is a market for these jobs. It is not a market that seems to be sustainable with our high school audience. And so, those factors combined with the fact that we will be having a retirement in that program at the end of next school year, the plan essentially would have the official program phase out with the, with the last graduating class from the program, which would be the current sophomore class. So, the program stay, would stay in place until June of 2020, and it would be, it would be my plan that the member of the department who's not retiring would become a member of the automotive department, and the teachers in the pro, in both programs are, are on board and have been working in their professional learning community time to work on an integrated curriculum, so that when we are talking to prospective families, while we have not seen the numbers of students who are eager for collision repair in great numbers to justify sustaining the program, if we have students that have an interest in collision repair, there is a place for them to get a portion of that. And I'm pleased with what the teachers have been working on thus far. So, there is no, there is no immediate change. There would be no change for next year, 18, 19. There would be, there would be no change for the 19, 20 school year, we would have a senior, we'd have a senior class in that program, but the teachers are working on a more integrated approach. So, for this, for this plan to move forward, one of the facets that has to be looked at is a, a closure plan has to be brought to the Department of Education, providing a rationale, and so, I have been in communication with the Department of Education about this. They've approved the plan, and so, as I indicated to them, it's a matter ultimately for this committee to take up, but the, the legwork has been done, and I wanted to put it on this month's agenda, at the very least, to open a conversation and give you an opportunity to ask questions, if you have any, or if the detail is sufficient, excuse me, to at least show you the direction that I think this should head.
I'll open the, to discussion for the committee. The, Tom and I have been discussing, we discussed it also with the instructors. The only thing that may adjust our thinking is that if the incoming freshman class of this coming year is overwhelmed with students for automotive, then we might have to make some other adjustments. But I'd like to, other than that, accept a vote to go forward with the restructuring plan.
Just a question, Bob. This, the incoming group, this, we would find out about this after the initial?
It'll be after the orientation program. It, with January or February 1st of next year?
Yes, that's right. So, what we would be saying to prospective families, so right, we're in the process right now, we've accepted some students, so my message to our guides department, to, to Amy, who's the point person on recruitment, is that if we have any students who are applying who might be putting collision on their application, we want to make a special outreach to them to let them know that it's not going to be an option as a standalone program, but it would be embedded in the automotive program.
Now, I guess my other question would be, the folks that are in, I can't think of the word, in our initial period for the year when they're exploring the major, the major system.
Yes.
Will that be brought up to them?
Yes, so what the teachers have already worked on is a plan, so the, the rising ninth graders will go through an exploratory program, they'll visit eight programs.
Right.
For every student who visits automotive, a portion of that exploratory time will be focused on collision repair.
So, if they choose automotive, they'll know that. Will they know that it's not going to be available?
Yes. Yes. One of the, one of our responses.
Not automotive.
Right.
It's going to be available, but it's just going to be combined with automotive.
Correct.
So, they're going to get a piece of.
And so.
I understand that. They'll be informed.
That's correct. That, there'll be, there should be no surprises when that, when, when, when they're discerning what they're looking to do.
When I went to vocational school, I had automotive, and body shop was part of it. Like, every third shop week, you had auto bodies.
Sure. It actually makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So, the name of the program would be automotive technology slash collision repair?
We wouldn't change the title of the program. We would leave it as, as we'd leave it as automotive technology.
Okay. My other question, sorry, is the spacing. Will, will that be required, if we're combining both, will that still, automotive shop and classroom be there for spacing? Or are we going to be able to do, is there any plan for that?
So, the, so the good news about the spacing is that part of this restructuring will actually help to alleviate a chronic automotive space crunch that we've been talking about for a long time. So, if you, if you were to fast-forward a couple of years, I'm seeing this program with four instructors. There would be two instructors in each footprint. But based on the type of work that the students are doing, both footprints would be available. So, for instance, if automotive needed a little more space to do work that didn't involve having to hook up a car to exhaust, or put it up on multiple lifts, we could use some collision repair space. So, one, one idea that the teachers have collectively come up with is that in talking about where their programs overlap, they both agree that a high-interest exploratory activity is, is taking apart an old car. That both automotive and collision, without them really knowing it, have baked that into their own exploratory programs. So, it was actually quite an easy fit. So, one of the first thoughts is that if 15 or 16 students are exploring, we'll say automotive. And right now, a real challenge for automotive is, their, automotive is trying to do their recruitment, while at the same time having a dozen juniors in the shop, and there's live work. Their, automotive is actually quite limited in terms of their space. Now, if you've got a project that can actually have a couple of different locations, you now have more space so that we're not, so we're not holding back the 11th grade curriculum, while at the same time, we're still giving them a very high-interest exploratory experience. So, we're not going to get rid of the spray booth, or any of the other functions and features of that collision repair footprint. But we definitely can have the teachers decide where to best allocate that space.
So, will we gain any space with that classroom?
Yes.
So, we could take, you could use that other classroom that they use for?
Yes.
Over at automotive?
Yes. So, yeah.
Then the other question I have, with the spray booth, is, wasn't there something about that we would have to keep, if we stayed with that, wouldn't we have to do some kind of upgrading? That we were talking about, have to be a new building put in, now, will we have to worry about that going forward?
Thankfully, Bob, we've done all the necessary upgrades. So, I don't, I would see a long, it would be a long-term discussion with perforations in the roof and the upgrades there. So, we're in good shape.
Just double-check.
Nope. Good, those are, those are good infrastructure questions.
The only other thing that has come about, new automobiles using aluminum, we would have to put an aluminum-type workshop in there. Because aluminum doesn't have a memory like metal. If you crash it, you can bring metal back. But aluminum, once it's crashed, it's crashed.
And that's a.
Just replace the parts. They just come out, bring new fenders, and put them on. That's all they do now.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Tom, if a student wants to really focus on automotive in the future, is there an opportunity for him to be, or her, to be given more time in auto, automotive than in tune-ups or?
Yes. Yeah. I, I think that, again, with the capacity of having that, having a teacher in the department, that's the beauty of the way our entire school is structured.
You just had the same question.
That there are areas of specialization, that we don't, you know, our vocational days are not chopped up. So, we may have a rising senior, we may have a rising junior, who might want to, who might want to get more into that. Or there may be co-op opportunities. Because in conversations with the instructors and conversations with advisors, what we really want to laser beam on is, if the local labor market requires these, this set of skills for entry level, what, what both John and Steve have identified is, that's what they, that's what they can still continue to target. So, I agree. We should not be pigeonholed, saying that an automotive student might never, ever, ever be interested. It's not the same as a major and a minor, but there's, there is that opportunity for students, and we can schedule that additional time. We're project-based, we're competency-based, we're not chained to seat time, we're not chained to one-size-fits-all. So, we can take advantage of that.
Good. Very good.
Hey, Tom, in regards to expanding the school, if they did that, would that change the plan to combine that into one area then?
If we, if we got to a point, if we got to a point X number of years from now where we had more space, I would have to do an honest analysis of what the interest is. Because one of the biggest drivers is that the interest level of the kids that we're onboarding, it isn't there. But what I am interested in pursuing, as I have said for a while regarding the world beyond grade 12, and our role in the region to help with workforce development, is that I could, and I've, I've offered this just off the top of my head, but I think conceptually, this could work. If all of our local employers are talking, in this industry, are talking about the difficulty of getting trained hires, why can't we be a regional training center as part of our adult ed program? Why couldn't we run a program with licensed staff who could maybe tap into a 17 to 22 market of high school graduates who might want to enter this industry? If we cannot, if we cannot attract enough 14-year-olds, perhaps we can take the next step and talk about how do we get them exposure to it in an automotive program? That might plant some seeds. So, and we don't, this, that could be a mutually exclusive idea. We don't have to do this in order to do that. But I see that as an opportunity. But in a grand design, I would have to honestly come back and say, when the time comes, we could look at that. And if it turns out that in five to 10 years there was a change, well, then we could go back to the state and talk about a subsequent application, certainly.
Any other input? I'll entertain a vote to go forward.
Second.
Situick, Rockland, any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. I'll keep you updated on the progress on this restructuring. Mr. Chairman, several out-of-state field trips as listed on the agenda, Business Professionals of America. You heard Sandy talk about Evan going to the national contest in Dallas. That's the same organization you see on the agenda. The Outdoor Adventure Club's annual trip to, for whitewater rafting in Maine. And collision repair going, continuing on the legacy of Kenny Fair. As Kenny, you recall, setting up this annual field trip to Epping, New Hampshire for New England Dragway. Those are three scheduled out-of-state trips in May.
I make a motion, we accept all three.
Hanover, second by Rockland. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. And we have the surplus as listed, math and English resources.
Rockland, you want to make the?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Rockland. And we'll naturally, as per part of the motion, make sure that no other good agency wants to use them. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Onico.
Before Chris takes over his duties, I just want to alert the board, back in February, when we voted the warrants, the, there was a typo in the, in the number. So, Chris is going to make a motion to rescind the vote we made in February. And then, we're going to make it on the number we voted. And then, we're going to, you're going to take a vote on the new number. So, just a little miscommunication typo, typo stuff that I, I pulled together. So, we need to, we'll vote, we'll rescind February, we'll vote February. Then we, because we didn't meet last month, we'll vote March. And then, you'll vote, you'll vote February, and then you'll vote March again. So, we got three votes. So, we'll let Chris take over.
Andrew, Chris?
Okay. A vote to rescind the vote from 2014, a vote February 14, 2018, warrants 14 and 15, for $1,064,127.49.
Second.
Second by Situick. Any further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
That does not longer exist. Chris?
All right. Motion for warrants 14 and 15, totaling $1,064,916.33.
Second by Situick. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. It has been corrected. Chris?
Motion three, warrants for approval, warrants for, excuse me, warrants 16 and 17, totaling
Second.
Second.
Hanover, Whitman?
Whitman, try.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
We got one more vote.
Okay.
Motion four, warrants for approval, warrants 18, 19, and 20, totaling $1,384,948.3.
Second by Whitman. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous. I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
You want a request for action?
I'm moved.
Sorry, Bob.
Oh, request for action?
Yeah. I have a.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, I received in the mail, the packet for the conference. And they're asking if any of the schools committees or regions would like to present any resolutives. I was just thinking, when I read that, the fact that the state, and it may be something we may want to bring up at the breakfast, the state where mandated busing, they're just not funding it. And non-mandated articles that they're requesting for us to do, that they're not funding. Maybe we may want to think about putting together, and there's a guideline on how you do it, a resolution to bring to the conference to address a couple of those articles or items that are costing regional school systems monies that the state claimed that they were going to pay in the beginning, but they're not. I know that Whitman-Hanson School Committee are looking for a lawyer to do it pro bono, maybe suing the state for funding transportation. They're not, you know, and having some type of a class action suit, whether or not it's effective. This is something they're looking at. But we may want to do that, to bring it forward at the conference, so the rest of the school committee members can vote on it. And maybe we can send that resolution and knock on a few doors in the State House, saying, hey, look, you said you were going to fund transportation at a certain amount. It's getting less every year. And the same thing with non-mandated issues that they're telling us we need to do, but they're not funding them. And it's costing the regions money. So, we may want to look at something like that.
And, Mr. Chairman, Dan, you're referring to the, this fall's?
Right.
MAS, MAS, the conference that you go to annually, they're just, this is the legwork that has to be done for this upcoming November?
Right. And, you know, for a resolution. They sent me a packet. I don't know if you got one.
I didn't receive the one you're referring to.
But it, I guess, they're saying certain words have to put in, be put in the resolution, you know? Let it be known that, you know, that's up there.
I agree.
And, you know.
Well, Dan, I would certainly be happy to reach out to the Mass Association of Regional Schools and see if there are any other coordinated efforts going on, and bring something back for an update at some point.
Right. And, you know, and we may want to get at it, because that way, we can at least let them know that, you know, this is, the things that they're not funding are just killing our budgets.
You had someone symbolize last year, too. Was there unfunded mandates, or what was it last year?
Well, we discussed that in one of the conferences, you know, where we went after them. And the head of education was there. And they claim, well, they're eliminating some of the multiple mandates that the schools have to do. And they said they got rid of two or three. And I said, well, look at the other 200 and 300 that you should be looking at.
Thank you, Dan. Consensus has it? That we'll look forward to it?
Yep.
Consensus has it?
Yeah.
Now, we'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I read the motion for?
Yes.
So, the motion would be to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the deployment of security of personnel devices or strategies with respect thereto, and to discuss strategy with regard to bus noise litigation, Plymouth Superior Court. Because doing so in open session might jeopardize the security or litigation strategies of the, of the school committee.
I'd not reconvene. I'd not reconvene to open session.
Okay, so we will, I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's a fair point. So, we will not return, we will not return from executive session. We will simply motion to adjourn. We won't, we won't return to open session and adjourn. We'll adjourn in executive session. Okay.
Do you want Sandy's this day?
Could be a roll call vote, right?
I can, we have to do the security part first.
Doesn't have to be a roll call vote?
It does. But I don't know if you, I interrupted you, Bob. So, you may not have gotten a second on Chris's motion.
Go ahead.
Second to motion.
Second by Hanover. All in favor?
We need a roll call.
Yes, we roll call?
Yes.
Chris?
It's a roll call vote, Chris, to, for, to go into executive session. So, it's an individual voice vote.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you.